I would like to advise all those present that notice of this regular meeting of March 19th, 2025 has been provided to the public in accordance with the provisions of the Open Public Meeting Act of the State of New Jersey. Notice of time and place of this meeting has been included in the annual notice of meetings, which was posted and filed with the city clerk and with the Jersey Journal and the Star Ledger. An additional notice of time and place was posted and filed with the city clerk and was forwarded to the Bergen Record and Star Ledger on March 14th, 2025. The regular meeting of the Municipal Council of the City of Bayonne is now in session. Ms. Medina, please call the roll.
Mr. Booker?
Here.
Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Mr. Perez?
Here.
Ms. Weimer?
Here.
Mr. La Palooza?
Here. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Aye. Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Every once in a while, we have some people who do very heroic things, and we like to honor them for their heroic actions. And so, the VFW, Joyce Herbert VFW, has an award citation, and the city council as well has an award citation for Mr. Daniel Harrington, who's in the audience with us. And I'd like to read the summary of the VFW award. Daniel J. Harrington, Jr., of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, displayed tremendous courage and heroism in September 2021 when he jumped into treacherous waters on a Lavalet Beach to rescue a 40-year-old woman caught in riptides and undertows. Without regard for his own life, Harrington swam through dangerous waters and saved the woman from drowning. When Harrington and the woman were in danger of being separated, he remained calm as he held on to the woman. Dan was able to hand over the woman to the rescue teams and get rescued himself. The rescue team brought Dan and the woman safely to the shore. It is indeed an honor to congratulate Daniel J. Harrington, Jr. for his tremendous courage and valor. And given this day, the 19th day of March 2025, it's signed by the Commander Glenn Flora and Adjutant Jason Arnett. We as well on the city council want to commend you, and we give commendations and praise from the citizens of Bayonne. And, Mr. Harrington, a lot of us know you as a business owner in town, and we think it's a great thing that you did, and you put your own life at risk. And I can't think of a more heroic thing to do. So, we want to say thank you from the City of Bayonne as well.
Thank you very much.
So... Did you want to add? Okay. So, at this time, we'd just like to maybe take a picture of presenting you with this, and then we'll get... Oh, Mr. Booker, go ahead.
All right, first thing, real quick, I want to say congratulations to Danny, as Gary said. I just want to say again, congratulations. He knows you as a business owner. I go a little deeper than that. I'm not ashamed to say that, that you and I go way, way back, back in school days. And I know you, I would expect nothing less from you. You were an outstanding guy back then. You would do anything for anybody, I know that, and our friendship has lasted all these years. And I mean, I have so much respect for you, and it's well deserved, and I just want to say congratulations to you and your family.
Thank you very much.
Dan, I do not know you for many, many years, as I'm not nearly as old as Mr. Booker.
I was waiting for that.
I was waiting for that, yeah. Or good-looking.
But I do know of you, and certainly I know you to be a wonderful, very fair businessman, very well-respected, and I just simply want to thank you for your actions, and thank you for renewing my faith that there still are good people that are willing to go above and beyond for someone else. So, thank you again.
Mr. Harrington, I think I've known you and your family all of my 34 years on Trask Avenue, as the Harringtons up the block, and you're... Especially your father, Yubby, and how kind he was to me all the time. I think my first dog was his, because Shelley. He'd walk her by the house every day and let me play with her, and I just... I think, when I think of you and your family, it's... You should be honored every day, not just for this heroic act, but because you're all good and decent people. And God bless you, because you really, you've got a heart of gold, every one of you. So, thank you very much for your heroic work.
Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations.
Mr. Harrington, my name is Juan Perez, and I want to congratulate you on such a tremendous task of saving someone's life. It's very difficult, you have to think, am I going to make it or not? But you did make it, and you did put there, put your heart into it, and you did it. God gave you the strength, and you did it. I'm not as old as Lloyd Booker, I know that, that's why I don't know you. I was a young kid then, so...
I would like, I would wish everybody would stop flattering me with all these comments. Thank you very much.
So, congratulations.
Congratulations. Anybody want to...
Yes.
Congratulations. Thank you. Hold on. Thank you. You should pin this.
We should.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll get it going.
Thank you.
Too many awards.
Too many, yes. How do you body? How do you body?
We all...
Except for you, no.
Except for you, all right.
Wise guys. Good chance.
Okay. I'm going to do one.
Sorry.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. Congratulations. One, two, three. Yeah. Ooh, I'm scared. This is... Yeah. Congratulations. Congratulations. We should. Okay. Thank you. Center? Okay. We'll get it going. Thank you.
Too many awards.
Too many, yes.
Well, it's not too many.
How do you body? How do you body?
It's good.
We all... Except for you, no.
Except for you, all right.
Wise guys. Good chance.
Okay. I'm going to do one.
Sorry.
Okay, one, two, three. One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Congratulations. 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 Congratulations.
Madeline?
Ready.
Can we do O1?
O1 is a bond ordinance providing for the lead service line replacement project in and by the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, New Jersey, appropriating $13 million therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $13 million bond or notes for the city to finance a course thereof. It was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held February 19th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of March 19th. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And the resolution moved by the council as a whole, given the ordinance second reading. And on the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, a bond ordinance providing for the lead service line replacement project in and by the City of Bayonne in the County of Hudson, New Jersey, appropriating $13 million therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $13 million bonds or notes of the city to finance the course thereof. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may have a motion to move it...
Move it as a whole? Can we keep it as a whole?
Close as a whole?
I think we all are...
And on the resolution to close the meeting, motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage moved by a whole?
Yes.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
This is very important to our city. It moves the lead lines, which are a hazard to people's drinking water. It modernizes the town, and it tries to help people who would have ordinarily had a major cost to dig this up and to replace these lead lines with copper. And so, I've had a lot of interest in this, phone calls, wondering when this was going to start, and I'm very happy to see this come to fruition today. And with that, I vote aye.
O2 is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan for the property located at 28-34 East 22nd Street, which is identified as Block 212, Lots 30, 31, and 32, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. It was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held February 19th, was published it... Actually, not published in the Jersey Journal, it was published in the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of March 19th. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by council member Perez, given the ordinance second reading. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
I'd second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan for the property located at 28-34 East 22nd Street, which is identified as Block 212, Lots 30, 31, and 32, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may have a motion to close.
Move it. Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second. And on that resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
O3...
We're carrying O3?
I still have to read it in, and then we'll...
Okay, sure.
O3 is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, adopting the redevelopment plan for 15 Agnes Street, which is identified as Block 232, Lot 10, as shown on the official tax map of the city pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held February 19th, was published in the Jersey Journal and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. And again, it was not the Jersey Journal. Change all of that. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a meeting at this meeting of March 19th, is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And there is a motion to postpone this second reading and a public hearing to the meeting of April 16th. Who'd like to move it?
I'll move it.
Second.
Second.
And on the resolution to postpone, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
O4 is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, approving the financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and 111 Avenue F Partners Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 107-111 Avenue F, which is identified as Block 456, Lot 7, 8.01, 8.02, 8.03, 9, and 10, as shown on the official tax map of the city, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held February 19th, was published in the Star Ledger, and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of March 19th. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And the resolution moved by the council president, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. La Palooza?
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, approving the financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and 111 Avenue F Partners Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at 107-111 Avenue F, which is identified as Block 456, Lot 7, 8.01, 8.02, 8.03, 9, and 10. And the council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Ms. Nadrowski in the back.
Sharon Nadrowski, 126 Avenue A. Again, not what I'm here for, but since I'm here, and we're giving away free money again. How many years is the pilot? That you're voting?
This pilot is 25 years.
25? Another 25 year. I thought we were, I thought we were way below that by now. And again, I'm just going to reiterate, 2022, we had a big news article, Gary, you quoted in there, saying that it was 90, 95% occupancy in all these buildings. If that is true, there's no need to give pilots for incentives. Incentives are meant to offset risk of not being able to rent at market value and get back. You guys have testified to me every time I'm here that we're at full capacity everywhere. So, I'm not sure why the taxpayers are not, are still paying their fair share, going up every year, and we're giving pilots. They're meant, as a site, when I sat up there, I gave them for incentive. We were not at 95% occupancy, never sat there and claimed it. But if you guys are saying we're at 95 occupancy, 95% occupancy in all these new buildings, I don't understand the need for... There is a, you know, if-then-but test. It doesn't fit, based on your own, you know, statements up there. And that'll be the same question I'm going to ask for the next four. So, when you read it, could you just tell me how many years they are, so I don't have to come up and ask about it?
But you also know about financing, because you sat up here and voted... I voted no for 60 of these until we started getting community asks, okay? This particular property will not get built without the pilot, and there's substantial buildup that's needed there because of the floodplain rules that changed.
Understood, again, it's...
So, again, you asked the reason, I'm giving you the reason, and that's the reason why these people need this pilot to get that area done.
I understand, and the risk is finance and risk. Again, we needed to do that at a time when the city was, when no one was developing here, it was a test market, so we did it. When you were voting no, that's actually when they needed to be incentivized, because the market hadn't been tested, but by your own testimony...
They were all 30 years at that time.
The market is, the market is fully supporting itself, so it doesn't need residents' tax dollars to subsidize it. Thank you.
You're welcome, but that's debatable whether it's fully subsidizing itself.
So, council president, just to kind of address a couple of issues too, of also with this pilot. We do have Dan Banker from NW Financial who's reviewed this, but I think a couple of things too, of also, again, the change of the market. You did also say that the new floodplain rules, which this property would be subject to, they have to, you know, build 30 feet, you know, to accommodate the parking requirement onsite, to keep the residential apartments out of the floodplain. You know, that's an additional cost to accommodate to the new rules that, you know, is very tough to monetize. The other thing too is also, I think, what, you know, difference with these markets now than a couple of years ago is, again, higher interest rates and, you know, higher construction costs there too, to help satisfy that BUT4 test. The other thing too is also just even on the pilots, you know, look, I could tell the council, you know, and the public that the city will always get more money, you know, for pilots, you know, for the length, you know, the longer time it is, based on the 95% share that the city gets with the 5%. We put it into the agreements, you know, for, to help the Board of Education there, but like I said, the, you know, that's the, you know, the terms for it. So, I mean, if Dan Banker wants to, you know, discuss the terms, you know, he's here for, to evaluate what NW was looking at.
Okay.
Since he, since he asked...
Everybody gets a chance to speak, if you want to speak on the next one.
Well, he was answering me, I would like to ask something back to him.
But you're going to, if you want to speak on the next one, I'll let you speak on the next one, but he answered what you said.
And so then I don't get to... He made a comment, I'd like to comment. All right, I'll say it in the next...
Everybody doesn't get a rebuttal, but you definitely can speak on the next one.
Yeah. Do you want to hear from Mr. Banker, or?
Yeah, we could, we could hear from...
Sure. Dan, yeah, sure.
Here or there?
It doesn't matter.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Daniel Banker, I work with NW Financial Group. First thing I'll say is, whenever we take a look at a proposed redevelopment project, we review the pilot application and the pro forma and financials that are included in that application, and we review it for accuracy as it relates to the current market. That it relates to total project cost estimates, rent projections, operating expense projections, cap rates, interest rates, lease-up. So, we don't just take the numbers that are included in the pro forma and use them. If we feel adjustments are necessary, we make those adjustments. As it relates to the BUT4 test, before we consider a pilot of any kind, we take a look at the financials under a conventional tax scenario. And we look at several different metrics of return for the developer. One is the net project cost, that is, how much is the project worth at stabilization once the building is fully occupied versus how much it costs? The next metric is yield on cost. That is the total net operating income of the building at stabilization divided by the total project cost. And lastly, we look at internal rate of return, which accounts for the amount of equity in a project, and assumes a 10-year sale and what the average rate of return over that 10-year period is. All of these items have typical market expectations, and under the conventional tax scenario, you have a project that has a negative value of 5.8 million. You have an IRR of basically zero, and you have a yield on cost of about 4%. Market returns are somewhere between 8 and 12% on IRR right now, and yield on cost somewhere around 6. So, if we take a look at the pilot, and again, it is a 25-year pilot, for the first 15 years it's 10% of gross revenue, for the final 10 years it's 11%. And under the pilot, as proposed, the returns are still below what is considered, you know, market returns. The IRR is 6%, the yield on cost is about 5 and 1/2. And another important factor and metric to look at outside of developer returns is the debt service coverage ratio. That is a metric that banks and lenders look at to confirm if a project is going to be able to pay back the loan that was provided by that lender. Lenders right now are not willing to lend at below a 1.2 coverage ratio, meaning the cash flow of the project needs to be 120% of what they owe on that loan. Under conventional taxes, it would be 0.95, meaning that the project doesn't even generate enough money to pay back the loan in its entirety. But under the pilot, the debt service coverage ratio would be 1.24, so it would be likely that this project would receive the necessary funding to proceed with the project. And just as another addition, as part of the terms of the financial agreement, in addition to the percentages of gross revenue, there is a mandatory phase-in of conventional taxes. That's part of the statute, that increases throughout the term from 0% of conventional taxes, 20, 40, 60, 80. In the best-case scenario for the developer, there would only be one year of 80 in the final year, and two years of 60. In this case, at the back end, we're including years 20 through 22 at 60% and years 23 to 25 at 80. So, it is a bit of a bonus at the back end, because again, under the pilot, the city's share is 95%. As compared to conventional taxes, the city's share is about 45%. And right now, the site is generating $25,000 as compared to the projected pilot at stabilization of about $183,000. So...
So, Dan, do you mind if I interrupt? I apologize.
Sure.
I'm Jaclyn Weemer, and I actually oversee that area where that property is. So, talk to me in layman's terms. So, right now, we're getting $25,000 a year in taxes for that undeveloped property that is in, and I am not ashamed in the least to say, in somewhat of a depressed area because I live in that area. So, right now, we're getting $25,000 a year in taxes.
Correct.
Upon development in year one with the pilot, tell me how much of those, of the tax dollars will come to the city out of $183,000 in a proposed assessment?
So, the gross pilot, 188,000. 95% of that will go to the city, which is that 183 number.
So, year one?
Uh, year one will be during lease up.
Right.
So, we're assuming that it will be about 50% occupied in year one. So, the gross pilot would be 115,000, and the city's share would be 111,000.
And that would be the city's share?
That would be the city's share, correct.
111,000 up from the current 25,000.
Right. So, an additional $86,000?
The math I could do.
So, but the other thing too, Dan, just confirm to, again, under, the 25,000 is the total taxes paid. So, that's including the county share, open space, school board.
That was my next question. Thank you, Mr. Skelner. So, so, and out of that 25,000, the city keeps approximately, and Joe, please correct me, is it 40%?
Forty, 45%.
45%. So, out of that, let's call it 11,000.
Right.
Okay. So, out of that 25,000, right now, 11,000 is being attributed directly to the municipality to assist our residents. In year one, I can count on, with the pilot, I can count on 111 or 115,000?
Correct. The only exception is if it leases up quicker or slower, that number will change. Because it is truly based on the number of units that are rented and the revenue.
On the income generate, right. But one, one can assume that the developer's certainly not going to go for any slower.
Correct.
And any quicker would just be a greater amount coming back to the city.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that.
No problem.
Lloyd, do you have a question?
No, no, I have a good question.
Anyone else? No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
After discussions with the Council of the Board especially, and as relates to the EPA issues in the area and the need for remediation, I vote aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Um, I do, I certainly vote aye, and I do agree with Councilman Carroll in that this developer took on quite a risk with this property that underwent contamination and during Sandy, and took a chance, and I do appreciate that investment in our city, and I vote aye.
And Mr. Lappalusa.
Again, a financial agreement will help this project come about. There's been some environmental cleanups and different things that are needed over in this place, the flood plain, how to get built up. And this would help this developer, and it's going to make the, the area much better and much improved. So, I vote aye.
Oh, five is an ordinance of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey approving the financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and 445-461 Avenue C Urban Renewal LLC, which is identified as Block 219, Lot 24.01, as shown on the official tax map of the city, and was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held February.
Joe, Skelner, do you want to just give the financials for this before you?
Sure.
Can I finish first?
I'm sorry. He was leaving Madeline.
At a meeting held February 19th, was published in Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of March 19th. Is now before the council for its consideration and the public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president, given the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
And second reading is by title, an ordinance of the City of Bayonne County of Hudson, New Jersey, approving the financial agreement buying between the City of Bayonne and 445-461 Avenue C Urban Renewal LLC, which is identified as Block 219, Lot 24.01, as shown on the official tax map of the city. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. Council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Mr. Skelner, you're on.
Sure. So, again, the, the terms of, for this financial agreement for 455-461 Avenue C, this is the old laundry mat site that burnt down, so it's on the corner of Avenue C and 20th Street. This is also, again, within the redevelopment agreement, just to remind the council and to the public that they're providing the park improvements to the city's satisfaction for 440-442 Avenue C. So, again, to the terms of that, it is another 25-year pilot, but with much better returns to the city on the percentages of adjusted gross revenue otherwise due for the first 15 years. It's at 11%. And then there, it bumps up for the remainder to 12%. Along with that, then, that's where the, the bump in, you know, comes into the taxes otherwise due. So, for the last four years from years 22 to 25, it's at 60%, you know, for 22, 23, 24, and then at 25 at 80. You know, again, you know, it's not the best for the, you know, developer at that point. The, you know, the city does get, you know, more money off of that of the taxes otherwise due. If you also want to have Mr. Banker, you know, kind of go into some of the fundamentals too with this project?
Yes, Mr. Banker.
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah, so just a quick summary of the project. This is a 63-unit project across six stories with one floor of mechanical parking. It'll have 71 parking spaces on that floor, and there will also be a approximately 1,400 square foot retail space. Again, the same analysis as was done on the prior, where we reviewed the project cost, the revenue projections, the operating expenses, and it was determined under conventional taxes, it was unlikely the project would move forward. So, the pilot terms, as mentioned, 11% for 10 years, 12%, or 11% for 15 years, 12% for the final 10. This property currently generates $23,500, of which the city's share is about $10,500. And in year one, the gross pilot is expected to be 147,000, of which the city's share will be 142,000. And at stabilization, which we assume is 95% occupied, that pilot will jump up to $236,000, of which the city's share would be 229,000.
Thank you.
When you say year one, year one after construction, what does it pay during construction?
Conventional taxes based on the current assessment.
Land assessment, land only. Okay. So, and some of these buildings take how many years to build? So, there's a number. So, we say year one. There's a number of years that your taxes gone down till the building's complete. But more importantly than that, when we keep saying how much we're, you know, so, right now, for this property, I think you said we get $23,000 a year, and it's going to be 100.
Mr. Drowski, do you want Mr. Banker to come?
No, that's okay. This is for you. So, and this, this has 63 units. That laundry mat had a few apartments up in the back. I don't know how many, but I don't think it's more than 10, right? I don't know how many kids that put in our public school system, but right now in Bayonne, because you keep saying we get to keep it, because you know why? You're keeping it all because you're not giving any to the school. The county's not taking their fair share. You still do have to give to the library, just a lower amount, okay? So, understand what that means. But now you're adding 63 units, just in this one building. We're not going to talk about the, the last one. That's, we pay $17,000 a year to educate a child in Bayonne. 17,000. 63 units. You can have six, you can have, if you have one child per thing. Do the math. Do the math. How much are you really saving? Because none of that tax money, that you're getting all that extra tax money, our schools are busting at the seams, and you know who pays it? The still, the school's still going to get what they need because that's the law. Whatever they say, they levy to us, we have to pay. We don't get to negotiate. So, it comes from somewhere, okay? You're saying you're getting it. That's so you can move it how you want. But let's talk that we say the schools are underfunded, but we're underfunding them. So, that could potentially, just one, one child per, per thing, that's 60, another seven, 16, 63 kids at $16,000. That's what it costs today. In two more years, when the building's complete, it'll be costing Bayonne more than that to educate a kid. So, just keep that in mind when we keep saying we're getting a lot more money. Because we're also not getting the money to the schools, and it's also putting a lot more potential children in our school system. Thank you.
So, Director Skelner, can you explain to me, so I, I, and that's a, and those are some very relevant points.
Yes.
And so, at a cost of 17,000 a year, are we, do I understand correctly, have we provided in these pilots and the redevelopment agreements for an allocation whenever a pilot is approved that would go directly to the Board of Education for the school budget?
In written in every single agreement, there is a resolution from council that 10% of the pilot payment may be allocated to the Board of Education. So, that, but that's, the maybe language on that is written into the agreement. It is up to the council for the resolution to, for the council to adopt, which I, I believe is, you know, done in the prior administration on that. That has been a continuing practice, you know, for, you know, many years with the pilots, even before me coming, you know, into this role here. For the school, for the sizes of the apartment, again, the geared market towards these, you know, the notion that these apartment buildings are going to generate kids. I, I can't say with 100% certainty that they won't. However, if I'm building, you know, one-bedroom studio apartments at, you know, 500, you know, 650 square feet, two beds at roughly, you know, 1,000 units, you can go rent, you know, a one unit in a two-family home for less than that amount. Like, it's not geared towards, you know, these buildings are geared more for young professionals. These are geared not, you know, to raise families in.
Right. And I understand that. So, all right. So, we do have an allocation that is going to the school board.
In, written in the, their final management agreements, yes. The other thing with also that too is the city and the municipal council's budget has to cover the school board's budget.
Right. And that was my next question.
You know, there's no way that the city cannot support the school. So, even if we gain more money off of that, you know, if we just have 95% to this, the city, we're still obligated to pay for the, you know, the budget that the Board of Ed asks for. In reality, it's the county, you know, that gets hurt on these pilots. Yeah.
Understood. Thank you.
Anyone else? No protest against objections to or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me. May I have a motion to close?
So, move.
Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
I, the four of these tonight especially represent unique and interesting challenges, and I take each one as it comes. In this, you know, the, the prior financial agreement had extenuating circumstances to it. I think very important points were raised tonight by the audience. And I would say I have to agree. Just because a room is smaller, I think you put two people in a cramped quarters, you're probably going to end up with kids. And so, you know, I, I, I think that doesn't make any sense. And, well, and so, I'd, I'd have to say, I, I understand there were some issues that came out of this pilot that are good for that neighborhood, and I understand there was park issues involved, and that's fantastic. But as this provides nothing for the working people, the, the young professionals, as you put, I'm a young professional, and I'm getting driven out of town. So, I don't know what young professionals are moving in here or what jobs they've got because I'll apply tomorrow. But this, with no, with no provision for workforce housing or anything like that, or a provision for parking for that neighborhood, I just, I can't, I can't see fit to pass it. So, I vote no.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
63 units in this building, Mr. Maselli. How many one-bedrooms?
We'll, we'll get that information for you, but it's.
Approximately. Entertain me.
I would say probably half of them are one, one bedrooms and the other half are twos. It's almost always split right down the middle, but we have no threes. And to answer the question about the number of schoolchildren that come out of these, there have been studies done. Yes, we have studies on these things. We can't just say, oh, they'd definitely be kids because there are two people living together. That's ridiculous. We should be basing our information and our decision-making on science and study. And the studies show that particularly for urban areas like Bayonne, a school, the number of schoolchildren coming out of a building like this would be under five, would be two, maybe.
Right. It was the first time when I inquired about the studies that I heard the term transit-oriented.
Right.
You know, residential units.
Correct. And, and they've done studies. Rutgers has done studies that included the whole state, so those are a little bit more inflated because they're further out in the West and they don't have great access to transit like we do. But I, I think we have 1040 Kennedy. I think there's maybe one school kid that ever came out of there, and it was only temporary, and that's 60 units. So, you know, we can talk all we want about what we think, but what the truth is, is that not many schoolkids come out of these places. And yes, you're right, they might have a kid, but they're not staying here for the most part if they do. They generally move out or they send their kids to private schools. That's usually what happens. So...
So, Councilwoman.
Mr. Skelner, do you have a better breakdown?
The breakdown's 31 units on one bedrooms, 32 on two beds.
There we go. Almost right, right down the middle. Thank you. You need me work? I'm sorry.
I may.
Okay.
I'll call you.
I'll be right there.
Yeah. I do think, I'm not opposed to the pilot. I'm not opposed to the idea of additional funds being allocated directly to the city budget. I certainly would never be in favor of anything that didn't support our school board. I do think this absolutely does support the school board. I would like to see, and I would never, I, I am of the mind that the 10% allocation for any pilot, that includes language for the council to vote out of that, should be removed. I'm, I'm not in favor of that being there. I think that there should be a mandate if there is a pilot. We are responsible for the school board budget. I do think it should be mandatory. I would be in favor of having that revised. But I am also in favor of a greater amount of dollars benefiting our city directly, and I would hope that those funds are put to good use for our residents that are here, that are long-term residents, that will have to warm up and, and get used to the idea of, of this newly developed community that they're living in. And so, nevertheless, with that, I vote aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
I was very proud to be part of the council that mandated the 10% in the agreements. And it actually, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I believe it started at five, and we upped it to 10 even. So, most cities don't give anything to the Board of Ed. So, I kind of like that. Also, with the pilot, you see how much more in taxes that we're getting. So, even that's an increase to the Board of Ed at the 10%, where they usually get zero. Having said that, I don't remember the absorption study, if it was broken down by age group, but I would love to see how many people from, let's say, you know, 30 to 40 years and, and 40 to 50. I'd like to see the numbers of who are living in these buildings. Because, Mr. Carroll, you and I were proponents of that absorption study that was done. And when I go to a lot of these buildings or I go to different things, I see a lot of new people in their 30s, late 20s, living in there. So, I don't know, when I say a lot, I don't know the percentage, but I was wondering if that absorption study had that and if we could have that information.
It, it didn't because the, again, it's based off of what was the units leased. It didn't look on to the actual number of people within the, the apartment. So, we wouldn't know if it's a single person renting it, if it's a couple, if it was a family. It's just, was that unit leased on that there? What I can suggest, they do have software programs out there that track on the phones based on people's movements, and they do the data to, you know, kind of get that information. We could obviously chat more about it. It's the, one of the companies we met with, Placer AI, tracks that off the phones and the data uses for games and other things like that. So, it may be worthwhile, but that, when we got quoted for that proposal, and we did it in advance because, again, on the resources of, you know, the city, you know, in my department, it's $25,000 for the year, per, and yet for the license, it's.
And I realize the data changes all the time, including the absorption study rate could change as well, especially with different interest rates and, and different things going on. You know, as far as what people can afford even in rent, as opposed to maybe ownership or renting somewhere else. So...
My only answer comment is that I, I do think, and, and in my conversations with Councilman Booker, that I, I do think we have to start giving some serious consideration to the building of new schools. We are, Ms. Drowski is not wrong in that our schools are at capacity. And we, we do have to give consideration to how we are going to grow in the best way possible, because we will grow, and our schools need to have the ability to absorb additional students, whether it's, you know, whether it's 100, 200 students in our grammar schools. We have one high school, and, and I realize that we are near completion on, on a second, but that is geared towards vocational use only or vocational education only. And so, I, I do think we have to start giving some more consideration.
I, I agree 100%, you know, Councilwoman, on that, you know, I'm willing to, you know, and open, you know, to hear conversations from the, the Board of Education and the administrators, you know, again, their, the plan for, you know, what they're, would propose to improve the schools, you know, they're, you know, you know, I'm willing to, you know, sit down and meet with them anytime to discuss and how best we can help with this. So, hey, Maria.
Hi. Maria Valado, 767 Avenue I. I was board president for years. I haven't been there for like four years, right? But when I was there, I remember we negotiated, you guys approved it and all that, but I never, we never, never remembered receiving this month, the 10%. We don't, like, while I was there. I haven't been there in three years, three and a half years. I left four years. Never remember receiving it. But I do remember, Councilwoman Weemer, didn't you have something that you checked how many children were down?
I, I do. I.
In MABE that were coming?
I check, I, I do.
I didn't, I don't have those numbers.
Absolutely. I want to say when last I checked, and it was not this year, I want to say it was perhaps last year. I do think we had, I want to call it 66.
Okay.
Children coming from, from the old military ocean terminal at, at that point.
Right. That we, you were saying some of that, like a school bus was needed.
Exactly. There was, and there was a.
There was no crossing for them to come through.
Exactly. Exactly. That was, that was the issue, and, and that was, that's, that's stale. So, I, that data is not.
Not fresh.
On like any means up to date. So, I, I don't know exactly what that number is now.
That was like two years ago, when you first.
I want to say it may have been two years ago.
Right. Because I had just left, I think, and you, because I'm, we, we discussed it. We were outside.
Could be. Yep.
Yes. Because I had just left because I told you I wasn't on the board anymore.
Yep. Yep.
And that's the reality that we have. Our schools in Bayonne are older. You know, most of them are like, you know, Civil War age, some of them, you know? age, some of them, you know? There's not enough room for all the children. There is overcrowding in our schools. So, whenever we do a pilot, I'll always come up and advocate for schools. Guys know I'm a teacher for thirty years, I'm always advocating for kids. So, when we do these pilots, when we do these things, please make sure that that ten percent that we agreed upon, that we all were so happy about that day that we got it through, that it does come to the schools. Because there are needs. You know, budgets from the state get cut, then they have to cut teachers, and we really don't want that, because our kids deserve it.
As the Board President, did you discuss with the Board, the Board of Ed plans for new schools, not just what the city is?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we discussed it. Yeah, that was a separate, a separate group. We tried to go out to get land-
The ownership is on the Board, not on the city.
No, 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 no. That, the new schools, what we need is always funding, you know, and the state is limited on their funding for the new schools, and things like that.
How does, Director Skelner, how, how are those funds transferred or allocated to the Board of Education budget? So if we, we give a ten percent pilot over X number of years, I'm sorry, if we give that pilot over X number of years, ten percent is mandated to go to the school board or to the school budget? How is, what is the effectuation? Forgive me, I just don't know. How does that get from one place to the other?
This is the, I can say the fallacy, it's the misunderstanding about what's going on here. If the school says, we need two hundred million dollars from the city of Bayonne for our budget, we have to come up with two hundred million dollars. You never get short. The school never gets short changed. Ever. Not a penny. You are getting your money no matter what. So, it, it's, it's almost an intellectual concept, construct, when you say, okay, there's the city portion of the, the tax payment, there's the schools portion of the tax payment, and then there's the county section of the port. When you go to pay your taxes, you're not saying, okay, here's seventeen percent to the county, twenty, and no matter what, we are obligated as, as the municipality to provide the money to pay the school levy. So, I, I hear this all the time, and it's, if I sit here and do an example with three carafes with gumballs in it, you end up with more gumballs with the-
Of course, I know how the financial-
Okay. So, so then when you say, when you say that ten percent is going to, should go to the school, it does go to the school.
Here's the question. So, when that, when that was signed, then that was like fanfare-type thing, right? That's what you're saying? Because if we would have asked for that-
You're, you're getting it, you're getting it no matter what.
So even if that was never filled out, they never did that, we would still get that money?
You're, you're still getting that money now, right.
So if the Board now, I know the Board's losing some money from the state because there's cuts. So if they come to you and say, well, we lost it from the state, we need it from-
When you come to us with, with your tax levy that you need, it's the taxpayers who pay, who pay the bill. And, we're both constrained by appropriations caps and other caps. But, the fact of the matter is, if you had, I think, you said that the property undeveloped is generating seventeen thousand, you said, okay.
No, no, no. That, I understand the mathematics, the mathematics of it. The only thing I'm saying is when we say there's not going to be children, there are going to be children. Is there going to be sixty-three children? Because there's sixty-three apartments? Of course not.
We, we could never know, right.
That's not, you know, that's not logical either.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I want to get back to the financial agreement.
So that was just, that was just what I was asking, was about that ten percent. To clarify, where, where does it go? So everyone understands. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Vlado, are you aware, I mean, Ms. Mauer, excuse me, are you aware of the payments being sent to the Board of Ed? Like, part of that?
That's not what happens.
Okay. Do you want to explain? I know you're, you are in both, so-
I'm uncomfortable speaking at this point in this scenario, but I will say this. There is no separate check that is ten percent of a pilot being sent anywhere. It is whatever the Board of Ed struggles to keep a budget that is sustainable. They get hit with surprises, the same as the city. We are one city and one school district. We are all the same. It is our children in that place that sounds like a foreign land, the school district. But, there is no separate, the, the ten percent of a pilot being set aside for the school district is, is a misnomer. It's not a real thing. It is simply, the school district strikes a budget. We are allowed by law, a maximum of a two percent cap, a two percent levy, on top of the funds that we get that create our budget, to ask the city, the rest of our family, to send that money to us so we can educate our students. It, I would love, I am so sorry, I haven't even been named business administrator yet, it's still yet to be addressed on the agenda. However, I would love, fire me now, I would love to have a symposium or, or something here in this chamber, and really do arithmetic and explain to people, elected and electors, voters, how this really works. Because the financial agreement's not addressing it, this dais can't address it, we're not getting to the real story, and these people are just trying to ask the real arithmetic. It's, it's actually quite simple, but it's not going to make anybody happy.
Okay. All right.
So I will work on that with both hats.
I want to wrap this up and get back to the financial agreement that we're talking about.
So we're actually at the final vote, and we're waiting on your vote, Mr. Lappalusa.
I vote aye.
Moving on, O-six is an ordinance approving the financial agreement by and between the city of Bayonne and Dunoy Residence Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at ten ninety-nine dash eleven oh five Avenue C and sixty-six dash sixty-eight West Fifty-Fourth Street, which is identified as block thirty-four, lots twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, twenty-nine, and thirty, as shown on the official tax map of the city, which was introduced and passed a first meeting, reading at the meeting held February nineteenth, was published in the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board as required by law, with notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of March nineteenth. Is now before the council for its consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution given the ordinance second reading is moved by Mr. Perez, who'd like to second.
Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weemer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance approving the financial agreement by and between the city of Bayonne and Dunoy Residence Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at ten ninety-nine dash eleven oh five Avenue C and sixty-six dash sixty-eight West Fifty-Fourth Street. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak.
State your name and address, please.
Sharon Nadrowski, one twenty-six Avenue A. I'm just going to say, I understand fully how the pilots work, and I understand, Mr. Coffey, the, because I was here for that bill. And let's talk about when we say, we do, and I said that before when I stood here, the school always gets what they levy, it's the law. But the point was, that levy is only being spread against everyone who's not included in the pilot, okay? So the ten percent, how, when I was here, how that was written to be, is that ten percent was set aside when it came in, in a bucket, and that was on, was not, then, that ten percent, whether it was five million dollars, was not now distributed across the regular taxpaying individuals. And that is what's not happening. That is what is not happening. So if the school board levy was, you know, eighty million dollars, and we had, what should be divided amongst the residents who are paying non-piloted taxes, should have been minus the ten percent of the pilot, and it shouldn't have been divided. So when you say the school board's fully funded, it is, but it's not fully funded by all the people that live in the town. The uneven share goes to the people who are not under a pilot. So understand that. So don't say it's fully funded. It is fully funded, but not fully by the same people evenly.
And this is something we discussed ad nauseam when you were sitting here. And, it, it's no secret, the bottom line is the rest of, the rest of the taxpayers, it's, it's essentially a spreading of the pain, are the ones that are making-
Excluding the piloted people.
Excluding that pilot individuals.
Exactly.
But, but if fifty percent, but the bill still remains the same.
I understand that, but the, the, the spirit of the bill that we passed, I don't know how you wrote it, because we normally don't have it when you're there, or you exchange it, but, it was that, that money, the ten percent, should be taken out of the equation of what you're distributing amongst the regular peon taxpayers, who weren't part of a pilot. That was it. So that money was set aside, and not calculated into-
But, but it, it doesn't matter, Sharon.
Yes, it does. It does. Because it's coming out of your budget for doing whatever you want with, as opposed to-
No, it's coming out of the taxpayer's pocket, no matter what.
No, because maybe you wouldn't raise taxes every year, you know, you're raising them, but then you're not wasting on other things. So, right, so maybe you hold yourself accountable to some extent, because you don't have as much sitting in your bucket. And then you blame, because your letter comes out, don't blame us, the school board went up, you know, twenty, they're fifteen percent of the, of the increase when, you know, before you evaluate it.
You'd have that same increase, no matter how we allocate the pot.
Not against, to the people. No, you would have less in your budget to pay with.
It's, it's not our budget. It's the taxpayers-
No, I get, no, I get what you're saying, Jay, but you wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to sit there and say, hey, the, the school board raised, you know, a two percent levy, because they didn't need to raise a two percent levy, because they got this ten percent over here. Your, the city's actually raising more of the levy, because they need more money to play with, if, if everything was all distributed.
But if, if we're taking, if, it's regular taxation, sixty percent, let's say, goes to the school, right?
Yeah.
Fifty, I don't know what the number is now, but let's say it's sixty percent, is coming out of all the tax areas, including the property owners there. It's the taxpayers who are paying that bill, and it's the taxpayers who are paying the, the county portion, and it's the taxpayers who are paying our portion. It's all on the taxpayer.
Yes.
Not the city, it's, and, so, the but for is, if we've hit the point where a pilot is no longer an incentive to build, and we can tell people, no, you don't need a pilot, you can build this without a pilot, and we're just doing regular taxation. If we've hit that point, then that's a decision for the administration and the council to make, and you, you know that's a delicate balance, and it's, it's dependent on market factors. If this was the same market as five years ago, I'd say, yeah, probably at this point we can, we can stop with the pilots, or we can change the rates on the pilots. But the market changed, and it could change again next Thursday, get worse. So you, you're right. And then, then we have no construction going on. From two thousand, Joe Nichols used to stand here, spittle would be coming out of his mouth, because he'd get so excited, he'd say, you want some empirical evidence? From two thousand one to two thousand fourteen, in a place that had the, the most valuable piece of property in, in, in all of New Jersey, one thing got built, and it stood out there like a, a beacon of, of failure for fourteen years. The moment we offered pilots, and you and I lived through this, it had to be a mind change, we, our Bayonne sensibility said we shouldn't do this. We'd, somebody come in with a different viewpoint, and we turned on the spigot, and it incentivized people to come here to build. We were, and if you want proof, it's in the pudding, you were part of the solve. Twenty-six million dollars in debt when you walked in, and now we're, we're break even. You know, we're, we're a profitable entity.
Yeah, and, and we're getting all this great money, and then our taxes have gone up every single solitary year. Every year, every year.
And I, and I'd love to do the math on what our taxes would be if we didn't have these-
I want to get back to the financial agreement, please.
Okay, so I thought the ten percent to the school, the spirit of that was, it was, it was supposed to be in addition to, a new revenue stream, not part of the levy. It was supposed to be, we're giving this in addition, because obviously we all knew, like Ms. Vlado said before me, that it was just smoke and mirrors. And that's never was the spirit of, to say, we're giving you ten percent, because we know by law we have to give them whatever the levy is. It was supposed to be additional funding. It was supposed to be, yeah, we raised taxes and the city was going to give them ten percent. We had a five percent first, and then we upped it to ten percent of additional funding to help them offset the additional costs to improve the schools, look for new, new schools. That was the spirit of how we passed that. I don't know, because if it really was, just, we're saying we're giving it to them, it, it was smoke and mirrors, because we always have to give them what, it's the law. It's the law. We didn't have to do anything special to do that. The law requires us to do it.
But if the school board takes in that extra ten percent, above and beyond, I don't know how they take it, above and beyond the levy, but, so, i- if your budget is eighty million dollars, the levy, because the money has to come from the, from the municipality, the levy is eighty million dollars, if that, if that's what your, your needs are. And, so, I don't, I don't understa, I, I understand the frustration, but, but the-
Dan Castle could think of a way to accept it.
The practical impact of it is, that it's eighty million dollars. Whether, you can't get eighty million dollars plus other money, because the state requires you to deduct that off of your taxes.
Okay, then we'll take that in, so then your, your point about saying that maybe should be taken out, is irrelevant, your ten percent should be taken out, because you're not giving it above and beyond. It's just a wash.
I, I would like to look further into that ten percent, and we'll figure something out.
Right, and so, I, I would as well. And so, Director Skelner, I'm sorry, can you just explain this to me for, for two minutes?
Sure.
So, we, because all of these redevelopment agreements require a ten percent allocation, or, or require our ability to exercise that ten percent be allocated towards the school board budget, correct? And is that, is that correct?
What I will do is I will read the exact language that is in, you know, almost every single financial agreement that the city of Bayonne has adopted. The one in front of me right now is from two thousand eighteen for twenty-six North Street, when it was at five percent. So section fifteen point oh eight, it goes voluntary payment to the Board, sorry, the Bayonne School District, goes, it states, "The municipal council shall adopt a resolution directing the city to remit five percentage of the annual service charge to the Bayonne School District as a voluntary payment or payments." That is the language, and we've, you know, as a policy decision-
And we've increased it to ten.
That language, look, that, that language is in every single financial agreement that we put in front of you.
And so in my, and again, in layman's terms, what that says to me, is that the taxes for that property come in, we allocate that five or ten percent, depending upon what the agreement said, and even if it's a line item, it's a line item, if the funds never exchange hands, it is what it is. But the allocation of that five to ten percent goes in a line item to the school board budget. What that also says to me is we accrue that money on an annual basis, and the school board comes in, and we owe ten million dollars. That money comes off the top, and then the remaining balance of the school board budget that the city, that the taxpayers, the residents are responsible for paying, it then gets allocated either amongst the money we have in the budget allocated for it, or in the form of an increase in taxes. Is that not correct?
Yes, I see Jay shaking his head, I will concur, so.
You can hear that over there?
Oh, yeah. I hear the whoosh of the hair.
So that is correct.
If, if we're going to do it that way, that's, yeah, that's how, you'd have, create a different bucket, we'll use the buckets as a, a reference point. And you would create a bucket, where money is designated from the pilot to go into that specific bu- bucket.
Okay. So it is not that the properties under this pilot are not contributing at all towards our school board budget? Those, the allocation of whatever the funds are, it comes off the top, that money goes directly towards the school board budget, and then the remaining balance either comes from funds that we've allocated in our budget, or unfortunately through an increase in taxes. Is, correct? Once again.
It's an intellectually perfect synopsis.
Thank you. All right, thank you.
Okay.
Would you, don't say-
I, I want to try and move on to the financial agreement, Mike, so, I'll let you speak, but-
I'll be very fast, Microsignal forty-two West Twenty-third. What I'm hearing with all these, you know, the pilots and, and the money and the school, no matter what the school wants, they're going to get, and the overcrowding, so why don't the school board just build another high school and school and give you the bill?
Mike, that, that's going to entail a bond, and it's going to entail, you know who pays for that?
The taxpayers pay.
You do. Well, I'm just, you know, it's, but, but that, that-
As long as you got to pay it, you're saying?
Building another school is a hundred million plus, I mean, depending on.
Oh, okay, that's, I'm a layman here, I'm just trying to, you know, make sense of all this, and you're all saying it's very easy, just, you know, we got to pay them.
It's quite an undertaking, it is. All right, so if we could move on.
With respect to the agreement.
Look, with the respect to the agreement, to be a technocrat here, I'm telling you what's in the agreement. Sorry, the, like I said, that is standard language that has been vetted by our legal counsel, that was, you know, adopted, you know, back in, you know, the past council, again, when, you know, Mr. Zdrowski was on the, on the dais. In the agreements, as I said, the standard language that is in our financial agreement states that the municipal council shall adopt a resolution directing the city to remit five percent, you know, for 26 North Street, in this case, now ten, percentage of the annual service charge to the Bayonne School District as a voluntary payment or payments. That is in the agreement, that is, all four that are in front of me.
That is what's currently happening.
That is, that is in the agreement.
Right, is that what's happening?
I don't know.
Okay, do you think we might be able to research that?
I will research it, I will look into it. I can only state of.
What it, what it.
What the agreements are, okay.
I appreciate that, thank you.
This, this pilot, oh six, we're on.
Yes.
Represents condo units.
Yes, that's where I was getting at, so.
Would you give a brief breakdown of the following?
Yeah, please explain the two years.
The, the difference in taxation of a, of a rental unit versus a condo unit, as it relates to pilot.
So, for condos, let's backtrack a bit on this, and, you know, Dan can come up and explain some of the, the financial terms similar to the last ones, but generally speaking, when you build a condo project, you are designing it differently than a rental apartment. So, rental apartments, you're trying to, you know, gain the most dollar per square foot out, out of it, so you're squeezing, you know, smaller unit sizes helps boost up the dollar per square foot. For condos, the, because they are sale prices, you know, the market, you know, and the intended recipient, you know, to purchase that property is a different buyer. So, these, these are people that, you know, want to sit, you know, want to raise, you know, their family want to live, they don't want to rent, they want to own. So, for the ownership of that, you want to, you know, own a bigger, you know, you know, square footage of, you know, property. And that's what it is. So, the units here are, you know, bigger, they're not, you know, your one bedrooms are not your, you know, five fifty, six fifty square foot, you know, they're closer to your eight hundred, you know, square foot, you know, your two beds, you know, on the range of twelve fifty. Again, something designed for what the market captures. With that said, on how the structure of the pilots work pursuant to the statute, in the agreements, they, there is assumed to be a money purchase, a money mortgage purchase on this, and it's, again, back to the rentals, with, we're, we're all aware of the adjusted gross revenue aspect, so it's assumed that, that mortgage payment would be a rent payment, and that's how we get the, the annual service charge from that, in that mechanism. For the specific financial terms for, for this project, for Des Moines, again, from the policy directive, you know, from the council, we've encouraged, you know, for homeownership, you know, because we can't, it's tough to build single and two-family homes, because the prices, you know, are getting into the millions now. We are, you know, trying to encourage, and, you know, with this pilot helps incentivize homeownership for condos, you know. So, with that said, for, you know, on the financial terms of it, Dan, if you just want to kind of quickly, you know, go over a couple of things, and Council President Lappalusa just on, I know from a, on the community give backs that we've been asking for, I, you know, I'll state on the record, I think, given the fact of homeownership or ownership of real estate here is a benefit to people, you know, you're not paying a developer rent, you're having someone that's keeping equity into their property, you know, that in and of itself is, you know, we're trying to encourage, you know, more projects like this, to help cover that middle market of us having, you know, the jump from rental apartments to single-family or two-family homeownership. This helps cover that portion of, all right, I can't afford a single-family home, but I can afford something, you know, in between as a condo, and that's, in theory, what's supposed to happen. I know you're looking for a traffic light, there are three projects coming up that we will ask the developer on those projects to help contribute to, with the redevelopment plans coming up, you know, while we're, you know, vetting it, that is, you know, top of my priority for a, a couple of projects in your ward that we're identifying right now.
Thank you for that. I did ask for a community give back because we need a light on Fifty-Sixth and Avenue C. We had a crossing guard get hit, it's close to the areas, which is why I wanted the, this development to pay something into it. But I do realize there was a change to condos, and I really want to see this project come to fruition, because again, this is an area that's definitely in need of some rejuvenation. So, if you want to, if Dan could give us a little oversight on that as well.
Sure. Just to give a little summary of the project, it's a total of forty-four units in a six-story building with two levels of parking below and four stories of residential. There will be forty-four parking spaces, along with a roughly eighteen hundred square-foot retail component. As Joe mentioned, typically condo buildings are built differently, higher finishes, which result in higher per-unit costs and higher per-square-foot costs. So, here, you have an estimated project cost of about twenty-one million dollars, which comes out to about four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand per unit to build. So, in order for the developer to make a reasonable return, we first look at what these units would sell for under conventional taxes. When we looked at recent comps, and most recently, the Chris's Corner units that have sold, it appears that, under conventional taxes, it would be about a break even. You know, they would sell out all the units, and the total sales prices generated would be about the same as the total project cost. So, as it relates to the pilot, it works a little bit differently than on a rental project, because on a rental project, the owner, the urban renewal entity is the one making that pilot payment, and it's based on ten percent of whatever revenues are generated by that building. On a for-sale project, when a unit is purchased, the responsibility of making the pilot payment goes to that individual unit owner. Why that benefits the developer is because now that that individual unit owner is able to pay less tax money, they will be willing to presumably pay more in the sale price. So, the developer is assuming a pretty aggressive sale price for all the units, just to give you a sense, they're assuming six-hundred-and-fifty dollars a foot for the purchase price of these units. It's a mix of junior one-beds, four junior one-beds, sixteen true one-bedroom units, and twenty-four two-bedroom units, and they're expecting or hoping that the units would sell for three-hundred-and-ninety thousand for those junior ones, it's four-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand for those true one-bedrooms, and six-hundred-and-forty thousand for the two bedrooms. Now, as it relates to the pilot calculation, you don't, you're still doing it based on a percentage of gross revenue, but however, annual gross revenue is defined differently. So, annual gross revenue is defined as the sale price, you take the initial sales price of the unit, and you assume a mortgage at a hundred percent debt. So, let's say a unit sells for five-hundred thousand dollars. You assume a five-hundred-thousand-dollar loan for a term equal to the pilot length, in this case, twenty-five years, at the going interest rate at the time of the purchase. So, you do a annual mortgage calculation on five-hundred thousand dollars over a twenty-five year term at, let's say, six and a half percent right now. That comes out to an, an annual mortgage payment. You then add any applicable homeowners association fees to that number, that gets you your annual gross revenue number. You apply ten percent, in this case, for the first eighteen years to that number, that becomes your pilot, and that is the responsibility of the individual unit owner to pay. Now, what we've also incorporated into the agreement is, if for some reason, the units don't all sell, or it takes longer to sell those units, we have included a sell-out schedule so that it is the responsibility of the urban renewal entity to make those payments. So, that schedule assumes three units sell per month, and we converted those three units into what that unit would have to pay in a pilot per month. So, for example, their minimum annual service charge, it essentially becomes their minimum annual service charge, is eighty-eight thousand dollars in year one, regardless of how many units are sold.
Per apartment?
Total.
Total.
Total, yes. So, to give you a sense of what the, the pilot payments are estimated to be, as compared to conventional taxes, based on their assumed sales price, for the junior one, the pilot would be thirty-five hundred per unit, as compared to about forty-five hundred under conventional taxes. For the one-beds, forty-three hundred per unit, as compared to six thousand, and for the two-beds, fifty-six hundred compared to eighty-one hundred. So, it comes out to about seventy or seventy-five percent of conventional taxes, that's the, the break that the individual unit owner is getting from this pilot. So, at, once all the units are sold, and if we assume they are sold at the levels that the developer is expecting, the total pilot would be approximately two-hundred-and-eighteen thousand dollars. We've also included that the annual service charge payment would increase by two percent per year. So, it won't say, even though it's based on ten percent of gross revenue, once that amount for an individual unit is identified, that payment will increase by two percent every year thereafter. Another thing just to add is, in a situation where there's a resale, you know, the individual, the, the first person to buy that unit resells it in a year or two years, that calculation that I described earlier about annual gross revenue is recalculated based on that sale price, based on the interest rate at that time. So, that could mean, depending on what happens with the market, if they sell it for a profit, the pilot's going to go up, or if interest rates decrease, or they sell it for a loss, the pilot could go down. And lastly, the current taxes generated by the site, forty-nine thousand, three hundred dollars, of which the city shares about twenty-two thousand. And again, the, the pilot is twenty-five years, eighteen years at ten percent, and seven years at eleven percent.
What was the, the current taxes that's being paid on the whole property?
Forty-nine thousand, two-hundred-ninety-three.
Okay.
Protest against objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may have a motion to close.
Move it, second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it, second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
This one was tough for me, because I want to see condos, and I'd like to see homeownership, but I, I think there's too much risk involved, and this would also be a perfect opportunity to do, using government tax credits, a first-time homeowner building, or a workforce building where the prices are reduced, and it helps people that have a lower salary own property, and take pride in their, their structure. I vote no.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
Oh seven is approving the financial agreement binding between the city of Bayonne and Twenty-Sixth North Avenue Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at Twenty-Sixth North Street, which is identified as block two ninety-seven, lot three, as shown on the official tax map of the city. It was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held February nineteenth, was published in the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of March nineteenth, is now before the council force consideration and a public hearing. And the resolution moved by the council president, giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, in ordinance of the city of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, approving the financial agreement binding between the city of Bayonne and Twenty-Sixth North Avenue Urban Renewal LLC for the property located at Twenty-Sixth North Street, which is identified as block two ninety-seven, lot three, as shown on the official tax map of the city. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wants, wishes to speak.
I, I actually have a question. So, the, the detail explains that, we, we all know this to be a very large piece of property, and the detail explains the fourteen-story mixed use, number of residential uses, units, excuse me, and then parking spaces, and an additional fifty EV spaces, two-hundred-and-sixty-four bike parking spaces. So, I, I just wonder, are any of those parking spaces going to be, especially the EV spaces, that assuming would have charging stations? So, are, are they available for use by the pub, by the community, the residents around them, or is it solely limited and dedicated to the, to the residents of that building?
Generally, buildings like that would be just towards the residents of the building. The EV credit law, or, the EV charging stations there, that's a state mandated rule for all projects, that they have to put building, you know, put them in the buildings. The other thing also, just to, on a, a side note here on that, for the general public, we've been, our fire officials are aware of some of the, the issues that, and are addressing in buildings to make sure that they are, those car vehicles are safe towards the exits of the garages, just in case if the car vehicles do catch fire, there's emergency, you know, fire blankets put on there, and the ability to drag them out from the garage, so it doesn't burn within the building. Because of the ion batteries, lithium ion batteries in there, it's not a conventional fire, it's a, it, the heat, you know, just absorbs, so those blankets kill the, the oxygen there, and they just let it, you know, cool down on its own. But, just on a side note, I had to say that, because that, some of the things, while may not have been in the redevelopment plans, you know, one of the issues during our budget, I'm sorry, our pre-construction meeting, the fire officials have brought up and are being currently addressed with resolution compliance with all the, the new buildings going up to kind of comply with the, the EV rules. So.
Very quickly, Michael Mazzelli, I'm the applicant attorney. I think there'll probably be, we don't know, we're trying to figure out the exact number now, but there'll still be maybe an EV space available to the retail users, so to that, to that extent, it'll be available, there'll be an EV space available to the, to the public, but the, the residents will have their own parking spaces. So, yeah, so if there's any, you know, if there's, whatever number is required by law to be associated with the retail, that's what we'll provide.
And so, with sixty-nine hundred square feet of retail space, how many?
We're looking now, I'm not positive what the law says, I can't remember what it says.
Parking spaces allocated for the public to utilize for those, for that.
We'll, we'll make sure that there's at least.
What was it, twenty-five hundred square foot for four spots, or?
I can't remember off the top of my head, I'll be honest with you, I'd have to go back and look at the site plan, but, but whatever amount is, is associated with the retail, whatever percentage needs to, by law, be available for EV, that will be what the public has access to.
A quick question, can we re- revisit the, you said there's some outside parking that's going to be added on?
Yes.
If I can just get some more information on that, just before we vote.
Yes, well, there's an area that we provided along North Street that can serve as a pull-in area, as a delivery area for certain times, but that would certainly provide the opportunity for on-street, additional on-street parking spaces that don't exist there today. We haven't marked those out, we would be happy to mark out, mark it out as a delivery space, or parking spaces, or both, however the city council deemed, whatever the city council deems appropriate. But that space is new, and it is, it is, I think it would be a welcome thing, I think some of the neighbors were happy to hear that when they came to the site plan hearing. So, you know, whenever we can add on-street parking as a result of a, a development application, that's always a good day.
Yeah, because the neighbors that came in, they were, they weren't opposed to it, they just wanted, they wanted the idea of what would be some on-street parking.
Agreed.
Added to their community.
Yes. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else on oh seven?
Well, do you just want to just go, kind of go through the financial terms with Dan on these, or is it?
Well, he just, oh, no, that was from, that was from, yeah, Dan, you could.
Sure.
Give us an overview.
So, this is a fourteen-story building with four floors of parking, one of those floors being underground, for a total of four-hundred-and-fifty-five spaces. It's a mix between studio one and two-bedroom units. What stands out is seventy-six percent of the building is studios and ones. Again, a retail component of about sixty-nine hundred square feet. Now, because this is a mid-rise or high-rise building, this is a different type of construction. This isn't four-over-two stick-built construction, this is going to require steel, a different type of material, which costs more money. That's why it's very difficult to build these, you know, taller buildings. So, on a per-unit basis, on a per-square-foot basis, the project cost is much higher than a typical rental building. As it stands right now, the proposed terms are for thirty years, ten years at ten percent, ten years at eleven percent, and ten years of twelve percent. at 11%, and 10 years of 12%. As relates to the phase-in, what we've incorporated is a much more aggressive phase-in than what is allowed for under the statute as a minimum. You have 10 years of zero, five years of 20, five years of 40, five years of 60, and five years of 80. So those final 10 years will not necessarily be based on a percentage of revenue, they will most likely be based on 60% and 80% of conventional taxes. Because the typical turnover is at 60%, so the percentage of gross revenue is no longer greater than 60% of conventional taxes. So for those final five years, the city will be getting 95% of 60% of conventional and 80% of conventional. Right now, the site generates $178,000, of which the city share is approximately $80,000, and this will most likely take a longer time to lease up. So we've incorporated a three-year lease-up schedule as, in our projections. So in year one, we're estimating the gross pilot will be about $470,000, of which the city will receive $456,000. In year two, we're estimating $1.36 million, of which the city would receive about $1.32. And in year three, which is assumed 95% occupied, the gross pilot would be about $1.8 million, of which the city would receive $1.75.
Dan, the only question I have that came out of that.
Sure.
That sticks in my mind is, I heard you say years one through five are a $0 payment, so now just correct me if I'm wrong.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's.
Is there a required minimum payment on an?
Right, so in every year, so that's the, the phase-in of conventional taxes.
Right.
So, in years one through 10, the pilot calculation will be based on the greater of 10% of gross revenue or 0% of conventional, so that doesn't come into play.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we clarified that for everybody.
Sure.
And myself. Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else? No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may have a motion to close.
Move.
Second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move. Second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Again, this represents a unique situation. A lot has gone on on this property. I would, I gave a colorful euphemism before, I'll give another one. It's an Irish saying, "When you're forced to choose between two bowls of dung, you choose the one that smells the least." And sadly, this is the one that smells the least. I'm not willing to risk inflicting two 22-story towers or more on the people of the First Ward, and so I vote aye.
Is that James Garfield, or?
What was that, Yeats?
Herbert Hoover?
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
I kind of like lesser of two evils sometimes, you know? It's a little more, smells less, smells less.
March, you know?
But I'll vote aye.
08 is an ordinance amending and supplementing the general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter 1 general provisions. It was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held February 19th, was published in the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for a final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of March 19th, is now before the council force consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the council president, giving the ordinance second reading. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter 1 general provisions. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. Okay.
Oh, good.
No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may have a motion to close.
Move it, second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
And resolution ordering final passage.
Move it, second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
09 is amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter 7 Traffic, which was introduced and passed the first reading at the meeting held February 19th, was published in the Star Ledger and posted on the bulletin board as required by law. With notice that it would be further considered for a final passage following a public hearing at this meeting of March 19th, is now before the council force consideration and a public hearing. And a resolution moved by the councilman Weimer, giving the ordinance second reading. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
Second reading is by title, an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne Chapter 7 Traffic. The council is now ready to give all persons interested in this ordinance an opportunity to be heard concerning it. The council president will recognize anyone who wishes to speak. No protest against, objections to, or statements in favor of this ordinance or its passage has been filed with me, may have a motion to close.
Move it, second.
On the motion to close, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
And a resolution ordering final passage.
Move it, second.
And on that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
This is the real reason I came here tonight. Pilots were all extra. Sharon Nadrowski, 126 Avenue A. I'm here to talk about your, the city's plan to move the impound yard, or expand the impound yard to West Second Street. I have in my hand an ordinance that was passed 0-19-48 on January, August 21st of 2019. This ordinance of the City of Bayonne, County of Hudson, New Jersey, designated a certain portion of the public street known as West Second Street, within the City of Bayonne as a pedestrian mall pursuant to NJSA 40:56-65. Okay, so basically what this says is, and I'm reading it from the city's ordinance, it's basically designated to be preliminary for the movement of, and safety, convenience, and enjoyment of pedestrians. And pedestrian mall improvement shall include, but not limited to, a pedestrian through fares, public seating, park areas, outdoor cafes, trees, flower planting, kiosks, street lighting, and other such fixtures, equipments, facilities, and such. So now, the other part of this, that I, you could, you guys have the holding. But, so, "In the best interest of the municipality and the public, and to benefit the adjacent properties to such street preliminary for pedestrian purposes, that the pedestrian use is determined to be of the highest and best use for such street or part of therefore." That is the ordinance that was passed in 2019. Now you fenced it in, never seen the city move so fast, by the way. It wasn't outside company. It's fenced in, and it's going to be used as a pound. If you don't understand what First Street is, on the east side of First Street, we have a scrap metal yard, that is put in metal, you're all very familiar with, and we just learned today that they're co-mingling the scrap metal with the sand and stone, which is illegal, but that's going on down there. It's environmental violation. Now, on the other side, we want to put an impound yard, that's a 24/7 operation, in the backyard of 11 people, a block from me, gas and oil, and I understand, I know the reason why, I know a lot of people probably don't drive down Hook Road and see where the pound is now, but yeah, I'm that nut that rides down there once in a while, I have the video from months ago. There's got to be 50 cars, that doesn't fit in that lot, that they're all along the street, half on the sidewalk, half in the street, on the Conrail property. I don't know what the city is not going to auction, and if you can't get it to auction, scrap them, get $300 a piece for them, because they're free for you anyway. So if you can't handle the load you got, don't make it our problem in our backyard, in a residential area. You have a movie studio that's supposed to be coming up down there, right? So a block and a half away, you're going to put a city impound yard. Not to mention the noise at 24 hours. And additionally, you build right next door, which is also in violation of the city master plan, which specifically talks about the Texaco Improvement Plan, and about how incorporating, and the H Street Improvement Plan, because that all kind of comes together, talks about how we're going to incorporate the change, because it was written, you know, back in 2020, about how we're going to implement the change from industrial, light industrial, into residential, as, you know, that's, kind of stuff's moving out of town, and it talks that, one of the ways to get through that is have a five, there are mandate in your, the master plan, at least a 500-foot buffer between any such non-residential, between another residential property. CASCAM, as you guys know, you passed it, and you increased it higher than it was originally passed for, you made it a residential, it's supposed to be a luxury residential. The fence is actually not even all on city property, they've actually put the fence across Conrail property, they cover the, the city fence now goes, and the railroad tracks are in there, which I know Conrail is not okay with, because people tried to buy that property, and they refused to give it up. And you put it, that fence butts up directly to this residential property, which isn't, is not consistent with the master plan. The, the use of the land isn't consistent with the ordinance that's on file with the city. I don't know whose idea it was, actually, I do know whose idea it was. Somebody who doesn't live in the city, hasn't lived in the city for 30 years, but works here. This was his idea, because it doesn't impact him, he has no buying in here, he comes to work and goes home.
I'm waiting for you to finish, but the truth of the matter is, I don't know if, I can't speak for my colleagues, but I know nothing about.
I did call Mr. Booker, and I did let him know about it, I gave him a heads up, I said, I told him, you know, maybe he could get an answer, but I let him know I was coming here. I didn't want people to think I, you know.
And I told you the truth, that I know nothing about this, and you asked me if this was going to be an issue on the agenda today, and I told you no. And I know nothing about this, and the city council would obviously have to change that ordinance for that to happen.
Well, it's already built.
And I'm telling you that I don't like that, that close to residential, and that I'll have to research this more.
But the fence is up, so I'm going to tell you that Sergeant Conti, I'm going to put it out there, I talked to Jimmy Gamal, who owns the property there, because, you know, I made him aware of it, yeah, I did, because I thought, he should know, he made a big investment down there, and now there's going to be, I wouldn't want to live next to a scrap metal yard. I mean, sorry, that's down the side of town. But, and Jimmy said that he talked to Sergeant Conti, and Sergeant Conti, "Oh, don't only be temporary, we'll move it once you start building." And I said, "You know, that never happens, once something goes there, never, it's never going to move." And it's gas and oil, and if you don't believe that it spills and it gets all over the place, just drive down to the pound we have now.
But even temporary would have to come before this council, so, nothing has been presented to me, I knew nothing about it until your text message.
Somebody authorized, somebody paid for the fences, third party, out of town.
All right, Gary.
But wait, let Mr. Nadrowski finish.
So that's it, no, I'm good, I just want to hear, that's, it's just public speaking, and I know it wasn't on the agenda, but if I didn't make yous aware of it, it was going to happen, and we, like I said, once it happens, it's very hard to undo something.
Okay, we'll, we'll take everything you said into consideration, Mr. Booker.
All right, first thing, I appreciate you reaching out, and like the president said, Gary, we weren't aware of this, and what was going on, but I did my own research, and when someone brings something to me, I have to be educated myself to know what's going on. So I actually did a drive-by, I rode around there today, and I was looking at that property. Number one, this has been an idea of expanding this pound for a couple of years, okay? Number two, that is city-owned property, all right, so it didn't have to come to us, to the zoning board, or whatever, so we were unaware of it, but when you keep saying "residential," I didn't see, that's a lot of empty land down there, I mean, where are you referring to the resident? That's what I, okay, well, explain to me exactly your location, please, because I drove by there today.
There's houses right on the corner, Lloyd, right on the corner.
Tracy Fuser, 15 Kennedy Boulevard, my backyard, maybe 100 feet from where they put up that fence line. So if that city pound goes there, that means I can, it's a flashback to Port Authority for me. Never opened my windows, 24/7 operation, and nobody gives a shit whether I could sleep or not.
Well ma'am, listen, I'm not looking to argue with you by any means, I understand your concern, but listen.
But we live there, and this will affect us, so when you say you don't see any houses, we are there.
Okay, I might have overseen your property, and forgive me if I did, but I did also speak to Lieutenant Conti, and he explained to me, first of all, it's not going to be a 24-hour operation, okay? It's not, I don't know where that information came from. Number two, it is a temporary site, and with the, listen, with the, with the development that's going on down there, and it was stated to me, that obviously, if it's an aesthetic thing, then the city would move the pound. But right now, what you're saying as far as the cars on the highway, I've been down there in that property, I don't know the exact number, but you're right, they're looking to move them. I agree, it is, it is an eyesore to drive down that road, but it is not going to be a 24-hour operation, and there's going to be a whole lot of noise down there.
And when that happens, when it does happen, I'm curious, who do I call to say, "This is happening"? Who do I call? The police, they are not going to do anything? Who do I call when my life is being disrupted, when they are impounding cars, or moving cars in there in the evening, if it goes there? I want to know, because Port Authority also said I wouldn't be bothered, so did the mayor or whoever agreed that they could do this, until I was calling people on the phone all hours of the night, and making them come down to hear the noise themselves. Who's going to help us?
Well ma'am, listen, I don't think that, I understand your concern, I really.
I also worry about my property.
Right, listen, I don't think that.
Having a pound right behind my house.
I don't think they're moving the pound in your area just to disrupt your life.
But it will.
And if some, if you have a problem with it, then you call, you call the city, you call the police. Excuse me, is Chief Geist in the room, can you please help me out here a little bit in terms of the reasoning why this is happening?
But I have to imagine that in the City of Bayonne, there has to be other spots you could put it. Where the current pound is, people don't live there, so there are warehouses, so it's okay if you, if they're up and doing whatever they want to do all night long. You now have a row of houses where we live there and pay taxes there. I can't believe that there's nobody, nowhere else in the city that you could put extra impound cars, rather than in my backyard.
Good evening, council. Yes, Ms. Nadrowski is 100% correct, if you go down Hook Road, we have outgrown our current impound yard, we're maxed out. A lot of those cars, you'll see, they run from the CAKO property, all along past the central garage, along the S-turn, down past IMTT. Many of those vehicles are on private property or butt-private property, some of which is critical infrastructure for the city. And Sharon, believe me, if I could sell them all in a day, I would, but unfortunately, there's laws as to how long we have to hold cars. As far as the pound on Second Street, it's not going to be, it's for long-term storage, we will not be going in and out at night, you have my word on that. Any vehicles that go in and out would be Monday to Friday during the daytime hours.
I'm just curious if that changes, though.
I'll weigh in on this.
Who do I complain to?
You can call me. Yeah. You have my number.
Listen, I, I just want to weigh in on this, and Ms. Fuser, I'll let my colleagues answer, who do you call, if they're in favor of it, but I'm dead-set against this. I mean, and I understand, and Chief, I absolutely understand what you're saying, I understand we've outgrown that space, but I would think we would direct our Director of Planning and Zoning to work with any of the industrial sites, or any of these other sites that are coming online, to, at, at worst, rent us those spaces, at best, give us those empty spaces around the city until something's being developed there, or until such time as we get some other location.
Counsel, I mean, I can't speak to that, all I can tell you is that is the, that is the property that the city. All I can tell you is that is the, that is the property that the city told us was available for an impound yard, and that, that's why we are, we are using that.
Right. And while this is not directed at you, because you were told by someone in the city that this is the site to be used, the councilman of the ward wasn't told. And now a fence has gone up, people are here, people are angry, people I serve. And again, you were informed, you, you didn't dictate, so please understand where this is coming from. But it's a little insulting to not, I'm now caught off guard by this. I certainly don't think it's the right use for that property. Mention was made of the scrapyard. This is the second hit we're getting down there. I've been haunting the legal department with respect to that issue. And I, this is something that should, part of the protocol should be, when something is going to be done by the city, where it's a matter of right, the councilman of the ward, as well as the at-larges, should be notified. I, I wasn't notified prior to this meeting like Councilman Booker was. But the city should have, whoever told you should have told me, and certainly should have told the council president.
And I knew nothing about it until a resident actually contacted me and asked me. And, and I knew nothing about this. I, I did reiterate that to you. And I'm kind of a little upset that we passed an ordinance in 2019, and now what you're doing kind of goes against that. Nobody even brought that to the council's attention. Nobody sent us a memo. Nobody sent anything about that.
I, I can't speak to that ordinance, councilman.
I understand, I understand that you're doing, Sharon, just, no, Sharon, you got to give us a chance, please.
I just want to say, because Mr., and probably, it's probably for Mr. Skilinger, because Mr. Booker said that it's city property, we could do whatever we want. It is actually, you said it's the city property, we don't need to.
Sharon, Sharon, please, you spoke already, now let everybody else answer your questions. This is not going to go back and forth. Let everybody answer the question that you, you asked. We're addressing what you asked about. No, we're not going to go back and forth on this. We're not.
So the city don't have to buy by zoning laws? It's a public street. They're converting it to a.
As a point of clarification, it's a right-of-way that the city controls. It's a public street, a paper street. And so we control, we don't, we don't, sorry?
It used to, cars used to drive through there.
Understood. That was, I, I think we were, I don't.
I probably wasn't born, but my father's going to be 90 years.
No, and then we were going to have the, the signs there.
I don't want to have this back and forth. We have all the speakers going on right now.
I think the solution.
I'm more upset that nobody even notified me. Nobody gave me any heads up at all. Obviously, I'm not the councilman down there, but as the president, I like to have an overview of everything that's going on. So moving forward, if, if traffic or something's going to do that, they could at least, if they gave it to me and said distribute to the rest of the council, which they've done a lot, I would have done that.
Understood.
And whoever it was that dictated this, I would ask for a 30-day pause. I would ask for a 30-day pause, no further action down there. And on top of that, I would ask that we be provided options, no matter how good or bad. We'd be given some options to look at.
And Chief, before, I, I've seen those cars parked down there. I lost some work even, because you guys are parking on stuff that I used to cut, okay? And make some money on it. But nevertheless, what happened that, is it just an increase in cars? Or are we using the space for something else?
It's just an increase in, increase in cars.
Yeah, really.
Ever, ever, ever since COVID, it seems like less and less cars on the street are being registered these days. So we're impounding more cars.
And the information, just for the record, my statement was that the information I got, the city owns that property. So therefore, I mean, there's, there's justification in terms of the notifications to us. I, I agree with that. But I didn't say the city can do whatever they want. That's not what I meant.
I, I would agree. I would like to see a pause so we get a chance at least to, to look at this a little bit better. And quite frankly, nobody asked me if they know of another area, and I might just have one. But I would need to look into that first. But still, wouldn't it be nice if you were asked for a suggestion?
I can't believe that, that in the, in the process, whatever, however long this has been decided, that there weren't three options to choose from, graded from bad to worse. I, I can't believe there's only one choice. And if it means allotting a certain amount of funding to rent a space or to do something for that terminal amount of time, I think that's better than imposing this on people's backyards.
I just want time to look into this. That's what I want.
That's where it's going to end up. The, the choices, we have the property at, on 440. That's next to a property that is also vacant land. The problem is, in order to access it, we have to go over the other party's property. We looked at three sites, three, Tommy, three sites, downtown, uptown. And we, there was no place that the city had control of. And one place we thought about was down by where the buses, the school board buses parked down by the, by the, you can't call it a windmill, the statue that looks like a propeller. We could park it down below there, but they wouldn't allow for that. We couldn't put cars there. Tom, I'm trying to think of the, the other site that we had looked at. And then we looked down by IMTT on a paper street down there. But it turns out it's a point of access for, it's an unnamed street as a matter of fact. But it, it was a, it's the access point for two entities down there.
Well, you're saying it's temporary. Isn't there something down the old military base that could be leased or something for that nature? That would be out of the public's view and out of.
I think our, our goal is to go to one of the larger property owners in, in town, because we need, we know what kind of space we need to, we'd have to rent property from them. I don't know what the rent's going to be, but that, that's really our only option right now, short of getting some, some land donated to us.
Even the Turnpike Project is not going to start till 2026, and Marist is just sitting there empty.
Yeah, but Marist's owned, but we, we can go to the state. We can ask them.
Well, Port Authority owns the, the area down the base. They also own Marist, right?
No, that's, it's the Turnpike Authority.
But, but still, it's worth having a discussion with them rather than putting people out, so.
And ma'am, just for the record, when I did my ride-around, if I forgot and I didn't see your property, I apologize. But I did do a ride-around twice to make myself familiar with what we were talking about in regards to this pound. So I'm not disregarding where you live. I understand you being a resident. Nobody wants to put you out. And that's not our goal. Our goal is to look after you. So if I didn't see your property, I apologize.
And Jay, if you and Tommy are looking at properties to do this, don't you think you should at least inform the council of, of what your intentions are, even before you make a decision?
Given the amount of time that we spent over the past two years looking at this, and what we're up against is.
Two years, that's even more insulting.
Two, two years, this has been an issue for two years. Two years.
Then 30 days won't make or break. And there should be a stop order action now. It should take 30 days to come up with a potential fee structure to rent from one of these properties or to use their property as an easement. We should be provided that information by next month's meeting, or take longer, and decide whether or not it is worth it to pay that fee. That's, that's a decision we should at least have the option to make.
Chief, you go with that?
And we do resolutions saying we're in favor of certain things. We could do a resolution saying we're in favor of leasing or paying for.
And just off the dome, that, you know, if the overflow, understood that there's a process for selling these cars, and there's X number of them that are up for auction, or X number of them that are up for destruction, and those are maybe the overflow ones. Perhaps some of the larger parking lots on the, on the east side of town for these shopping areas can allot us, if it's 50 cars, perhaps they can allot us 50 spaces, until such time as they're sold. But with the vagary behind the limited time, that this is just a, this is only going to be limited, but we don't know limited to how much, this is a scary proposition.
Excuse me, council president? Is there, I'm just asking, because everybody's in the room. Is there a master list of city-owned properties and/or vacant properties?
We'd have to get that. I don't, I don't have a list like that if you're asking me, but I'm sure we could get one.
Tax, tax assessor's office can provide, provide a list of city-owned properties. I've been through them. And as far as vacant land, I don't know. I guess we could, we could see what's taxed as vacant land.
Mr. Valarda? I'm actually going to start the clock, I'm sorry.
Thank, it's fine. Thank you so much, council president, council, councilman. That's what I came to speak about. My dad wanted to come, but I'd rather him not get upset and come, and come. They live right behind her house, really is the entrance, one of the gates on Kennedy Boulevard. It's right next to her, right next to, to your house. My dad lives four, five houses down from her, right? So we really, when we saw this happening, I was like, hmm, wonderful. I thought it was part of the, the Gamal project on the corner. I thought it was part of that. And then I asked, started asking, and I reached out to you yesterday, and you had, you had no idea. What concerns me also is that you all did an ordinance to make that into something. And there was going to be something else, like.
The Port Authority was there. We were promised a nice walkway underneath the bridge.
Yeah, they used that as a staging area, but the intent was possible houses down the road and definitely repaving. I know that.
Right, and they were going to pave that, and it was like little benches. They, they painted a nice picture. And you guys passed that ordinance.
Yeah.
And then all of a sudden, I text you, I, because I contact you a lot, because you're my ward. And, and you're like, I have no idea. So they bypassed what you had, the council had already ordered.
What's upsetting the most is that.
Right, and it should be.
We had nothing, no awareness at all.
And it, and it should be that we, that we found out about this and we're reaching out to you for, hey, what's going on with this? And you have no clue.
But even Lloyd, you just found out yesterday.
Yeah, he found out.
I found out because you spoke, you texted me, and you found out from a constituent too, so, yeah.
Right, so.
You, what's being stated here too, and I have to say this, and it might sound somewhat defensive, but you're talking about 2019. I, I wasn't here.
Yeah, but I'm talking to Gary. I'm talking, because I'm talking, I'm talking to council president. I'm sorry, Mr. Lappalusa.
Everybody, you could make, you could weigh in on that, on your opinion.
Right. But, yeah, but, but I know, I know Council President Lappalusa was here. President Perez was here.
Yeah.
Mr. President, Councilman Carroll was here. We were here too for that one. Yes, we were, we were all here. And it was, it was happy, because it was going to be nice. And then to find out that that's not happening, the building was happening, the residents are all happy about it. And the residents don't want to have more traffic. They already have enough. I'm down there every single day, because my parents and pick up my sister, and there's buses already. There's already cars all the time down there, trucks from everything down there, and now we add that. You know, so if there's another place for it, because that section is already, and plus the construction that's happening at the, at the movie theater, at the movie studio, and the corner, it's just a lot for that area.
My, my colleagues and I, we're going to try and look and see. We're going to get that list and see if there's another location that could be used.
Thank you so much.
We, we know the need, we're agreeing with the need. We just don't think that that might be the best area for it.
That area is very congested as it is, and adding more to it is just not a good idea.
It's a residential area. We'd like to see if we can get that in a, either an industrial area or an out-of-the-way area for the residents.
Right. Thank you so much, council.
You're welcome.
And before we move on, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Because without you, we would have woke up one morning to an impound lot.
Thank you.
So I appreciate it.
Oh 10 is an ordinance for introduction. It is an ordinance amending and supplementing the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 19, Fire Prevention and Protections. And a resolution fixing Wednesday, April 16th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. The resolution is moved by the council president. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh 11 is amending Chapter 7 traffic, and it is for restrictive parking zones. It's adding one and deleting one. And a resolution fixing Wednesday, April 16th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Moved by Councilmember Perez. Ms. Weimer, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh 12 is amending the revised general ordinances of the City of Bayonne, Chapter 4, Licensing, Registration, and Business Regulations. And a resolution moved by the council president fixing Wednesday, April 16th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Mr. Carroll, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh 13 is amending Chapter 2 Administration, and a resolution moved by Councilmember Perez fixing Wednesday, April 16th, at 6:00 PM in the Dorothy E. Harrington Council Chambers as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Would you like to second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker. Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
Oh 14 is another ordinance amending Chapter 2 Administration, and a resolution fixing Wednesday, April 16th, as a time and place for a public hearing and final passage. Would you like to move it?
Move it. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
And Communications is a resolution moved by the council as a whole, and it is ordering the following communications to be received and filed. It covers C-1 through C-15. Any questions on the communications? And on the communications, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
And Officers' Report is also moved by the council as a whole. It is a resolution ordering the following officers' reports to be received and filed, and any resolutions incorporated within to be adopted. It covers OR-1 through OR-7. Any questions on the Officers' Report? And on the Officers' Report, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
I just want to welcome Ms. Desmond as our new business administrator and Mr. Blake to the Library Board of Trustees.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Now vote aye.
Consent Resolutions is moved by the council as a whole. It orders the resolutions to be, to be adopted. It covers CR-1 through CR-30. Any questions on the consent resolutions? Which one?
CR-29?
And on the remaining commu, consent resolutions, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
Aye.
CR-29 is authorizing the mayor and/or his designate to apply for and obtain the grant from the New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for approximately $2 million for a City of Bayonne food pantry study.
I just have a question, you know, and you see these things a lot for studies, and it's like, $2 million would feed a lot of people, and this is to study how to feed them? I'm just curious.
How to use a fork, you know?
Mike, I can tell you, we, we got, we got an email from the state. You didn't apply for your, your grant. So I called the guy from the state and said, okay, what is this grant about? And he didn't exactly know. He's the guy asking me to submit, submit the grant. It turns out that it was part of a budget allocation at the state. And it originally came from the county to perform a study, and then to, once a study is implemented, to actually identify sites to, to purchase and to, to make permanent food pantry facilities, so that we'd have one central repository. I think it's here in, down at Union City? There's another municipality in Hudson County. So Ms. Mauer and I have spent the past month or so trying to discern what exactly we're asking for and what it's, what it is actually for. And I would say at about 3 o'clock today, we finally got clarity that it is, quite frankly, the guy, I told the guy from the state, if it's $2.5 million for the study, I'll do the study, okay? So it's more than that. It's a study. And then once the study identifies that this is what your issues are, here's how we think we can solve them, then you go to the next part, and you would identify a property or two, and you would locate the, the food pantry there. And I think they already have an idea as to who would administrate the, the food pantry. If they don't, it, it's a limited number of groups that would qualify. But this is the beginning stage of it. We're just putting the application in. I'll know more. We'll all know more once this study takes place and we get some documentation to support it. But right now, it's a budget item for, I think, a total of $5 million at the state level. In, I think it's in Will Sampson's budget, allocated to, 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 to study this. But it is not just for a study. That's part of it. But $2.5 million, me and you, we go into the study.
Thank you.
And on CR-29, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa?
He stepped away.
He stepped away. So he is absent from the chambers. So we're moving on to R-1, is approving the Temporary Emergency Appropriation Number 3 in the calendar year 2025 budget. Would you like to move it?
Move.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez? Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
And Mr. Lopelusa is absent at present. R two is designating Four Cottage Street LLC as the redeveloper of the property located at eighty dash eighty-four East Twenty-Fifth Street, which is identified as Block four forty-two, Lot fourteen, as shown on the official tax map, and authorizing the preparation of a redevelopment agreement. Would like to move it?
Second.
Okay, before we move forward, the blurb says preparation of redevelopment agreement should be for the execution. We already approved the preparation a while ago, so the, the blurb might be wrong, but the resolution is correct. So it's execution, yeah.
Would like to second?
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R three is moved by the Council President, and it's designating ten twelve dash ten twenty-two Holding LLC as the redeveloper of the property located at ten twelve dash ten twenty-two Avenue C, which is identified as Block sixty-four, Lots two and three, as shown on the official tax map, and it's authorizing the negotiation and preparation of a redevelopment agreement. Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R four is designating Kennedy Boulevard M W Urban Renewal LLC as the redeveloper of the property located at three sixty-one dash three seventy-three Kennedy Boulevard, which is identified as Block two sixty-two, Lot seven, eight, and nine, and authorizing the negotiation and preparation of a redevelopment agreement. It's moved by Councilmember Perez, Mr. Lopelusa, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R five is designating Broadway Partners N E S LLC as the redeveloper of the property located at eleven dash thirteen West Nineteenth, four thirty-one dash four thirty-seven Broadway, and ten dash twelve West Twentieth Street, which is identified as Block two twenty-two, Lots eighteen, twenty-three, twenty-four, and twenty-six, as shown on the official tax map, and authorizing the negotiation and preparation of a redevelopment agreement. It's moved by the Council President, Mr. Booker, will you second?
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer? Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R six, authorizing the city and the property owners at six fifty-three dash six six three Broadway, which is identified as Block one fifty-eight, Lots twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four, as shown on the official tax map and of the city to enter into the funding agreement in connection with the redevelopment of the property pursuant to the local redevelopment and housing law. Resolution is moved by the Council President, Mr. Perez, will you second?
Second.
All right, I've asked Mr. Skelander to come up and explain a little bit about this to us.
And can we just clarify, is it six fifty-three dash six sixty-three or six fifty-seven? Our agenda says six five seven.
I have six five seven.
The property address capital.
Six five seven dash six six three Broadway.
So the terms of the funding agreement, last year, we put in front of the, I put in front of the council, which was voted upon, the funding sources for the escrow agreements. While it's a practice that we've put in our redevelopment agreements, we're front-loading now, again, to cover the area need study, to cover the redevelopment plans, so there is no cost burdened on the taxpayer and the city budget. This is all entirely funded through the developers. This is formalizing the city of actually being in receipt of the money for escrow to cover the city's professional costs on the drafting of the redevelopment plans. That's what the, we have an interim funding agreement, interim cost agreement for the area need study, and the redevelopment plan, financial agreement, redevelopment agreement, the whole process of it. This is just papering up the fact that the city, at the end of the day, will get a check, that check will be deposited in a trust account, and, you know, will be used to cover the city's consulting costs, you know, for our professionals. So John W., Joe Baumann, Andy Reichel, Rob Russo.
All the costs are covered, right?
All the costs are covered. That's what this is for. Otherwise, in the past, we've, you know, put it into the redevelopment agreement, but by that point, you've already gone through the redevelopment plan. You've already gone, did the area need study. You're talking about a redevelopment agreement already. So again, the costs were, you know, being floated by the city, which, you know, we put a stop to that. And then the second thing is then, you know, we also would, you know, ask for a check and not really have a paper trail to show, you know, the funding sources, so. This helps clear up the process, you know, it's a new process implemented, so you're going to see a lot more as new projects come in and as we get a redevelopment application. It's an exhibit that they have to submit to the city for, again, for the funding, and then we can, you know, accept the money along with the W nine and the other requirements we're supposed to do.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
And on R six, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R seven is determining the form and other details of the note relating to the construction financing loan program of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank to be issued in, in the aggregate principal amount of up to $13 million, providing for the issuance and sale of such note to the New Jersey I Bank, and authorizing the execution and delivery of such note by the city in favor of the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank, all pursuant to the New Jersey Infrastructure Bank Construction Financing Loan Program. Would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R eight is authorizing the Department of Public Works to purchase playground equipment from M R C Inc., a state contract vendor for the Eleventh Street Oval Park Buddy Baseball for the amount not to exceed $265,362.84. Would like to move it?
Some move. Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R nine authorizes a contract award two for cleanup for roadway improvements to Broadway Phase Two for an amount not to exceed $1,846.992.45.
Some move.
Second.
And I spoke to Director Carter, and this is for the second phase of repaving on Broadway. It'll also include some other improvements, some line striping, and did you want to add to that? It's line striping, paving, what else, curb, something with the curbs, right?
Not curbs, handicap ramps.
Oh, handicap ramps, I'm sorry.
All, all the handicap ramps will be updated in that area, and we're talking about forty, I believe Phase one ended at forty-second or forty, forty-first? So we're going to pick up from there and go down to Nineteenth, and then we are going to do a portion from Cottage Street to Tenth Street.
Okay. And I believe there'll be another phase after that to complete Broadway, right? I mean, uh.
There's the section between Tenth and Twelfth in that area there, and then probably from Nineteenth down. That was paved, I believe, in twenty fourteen.
Okay.
We went from Nineteenth down to Twelfth, so it's not, I mean, it's getting old, it's not bad, but in a few more years, it will start to deteriorate, a couple of bad winters, so.
So, so then, it's not, there is no Phase three, this will complete pretty much Broadway?
Yes, because we did parts of Broadway downtown back in.
It's hard to remember, like, when it was done, I believe you were just saying.
Twenty, twenty eighteen, twenty twenty-one, I believe we did, you know, when we had little sections that went seven or eight blocks. We went from First to, I believe, Fifth, and then there was a portion from Fifth to Cottage, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Director.
That should finish off Broadway, but it was all done at different times.
So on R nine, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R ten is awarding a contract to Bayonne Base Site, for Bayonne Base Site Preparation Peninsula at Bayonne Harbor Three to the Ambient Group of Williamsburg, New Jersey, for a contract amount of $423,000.
I'll move that, and I'm very happy to see that we finally got a, a bid approved and ready to go, because I know, I don't think we had anybody bid the first time around, so it's nice to see that this is going to finally be done. Dirty Dirt is going to be removed.
Second.
And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
Going to move, R eleven is for closed session, are we?
No closed session.
No closed session, so we will remove that. R twelve and several of the resolutions are, actually are not on the agenda, they're on as reserved spaces. So the first one is going to be R twelve, and this is for an agreement with Beacon Planning and Consulting LLC for professional planning services in connection with developers and redevelopers for an amount not to exceed $25,000 for a period commencing March nineteenth through December thirty-first, 2025.
Move it.
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R, R twelve. R thirteen is authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Beacon Planning and Consulting LLC for professional planning service in connection with developers and redevelopers for an amount not to exceed $200,000 for a period commencing March nineteenth through December thirty-first, 2025.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Booker?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
Fourteen is amending the existing contract with Beacon Planning and Consultants LLC for special professional planning services for planning issues with the city of Bayonne to continue from the period this March nineteenth for total amount, commencing March nineteenth for a total amount not to exceed $200,000. Would like to move it?
Second.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R fifteen is authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Clark, Caton, and Hints for professional planning services in connection with developers and redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January one through December thirty-first, 2025, for an amount not to exceed $25,000.
Move it.
Second.
On the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R sixteen is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an agreement with Matrix New World Engineering for professional engineering services for engineering issues within the city of Bayonne on, in connection with developers and redevelopers for a period of one year commencing January first through December thirty-first, 2025, for an amount not to exceed $200,000. Would like to move it?
Move it.
Second.
Second.
R sixteen, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R seventeen is authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Matrix New World Engineering for professional engineering services in connection with the city for a period of one year commencing January first through December thirty-first, 2025, for a total contract amount not to exceed $200,000.
Move it.
Second.
R seventeen, on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
R eighteen is authorizing the mayor and city clerk to, and directing them to execute an agreement with Waterman LLC for professional engineering services in connection with developers and redevelopers for a period commencing May sixteenth, 2025, through December thirty-first, 2025, for a contract amount not to exceed $150,000.
Move it.
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
Nineteen is authorizing and directing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Waterman LLC for special planning engineering services, for engineering services within the city of Bayonne for a period of one year commencing January first through December thirty-first, 2025, for an amount not to exceed $250,000. And I believe this is actually on behalf of the developers and redevelopers.
Repeat that one more time.
This is for developer escrow.
Yeah.
$250,000 contract.
It's possibly one of your ads, it's just not numbered because I got them late.
I understand.
I'm putting it out there. Would like to move it?
Move it.
And a second? And on the resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Perez?
Aye.
Ms. Weimer?
Aye.
Mr. Lopelusa?
Aye.
Now we are off to the ads. First one is from the Honorable James M. Davis, reappointing Eduardo Ferenti, Jr. as the Emergency Management Coordinator for a term to expire March fourth, 2028.
So move.
Second.
And then on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
And two is authorizing the execution of a change order for Agreement Number CY twenty-two oh eighty-one with Union Paving and Construction Company in the amount of $157,720.21, thereby making the total contract $3,542,828,71.
A move.
Second.
On that resolution, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.
Aye.
Ms. Weimer.
Aye.
Mr. Lappalusa.
Aye.
And three is authorizing the incorporation of changes to the redevelopment plan titled Fifteen Agnes Street Redevelopment Plan for the property located Fifteen Agnes Street, which is identified as block two thirty-two, lot ten, as shown on the official tax map of the city.
We're going to pull that one.
And four is authorizing the execution of a redevelopment agreement with Bayonne Partners Urban Renewal LLC for the redevelopment of the property identified as block eight thirty, lots one, two point oh one, two point oh two, three point oh one, three point oh two, four point oh one, four point oh two, as shown on the official tax map of the city.
Do we know what, where that property is?
No, ma'am.
At four, lot eight thirty, lots...
This is the Wassim Bure property, this is in connection with the Dirty Dirt.
No, this is the property found in the...
Yes.
Did we, did we, did he close on that property?
No.
Does he officially own it? Are we approving things?
We took, we took in, we took, remember, a while ago, we had the bids, we went out
for bid to get the Dirty Dirt moved.
Okay.
They came in, they came in higher than we had expected. So the developer now is going to provide us with an additional infusion of capital so that we can retain the lowest responsible bidder to move the dirt.
Yeah.
Well, we did that today.
Yes. Yeah, that was Ambien Group.
Right.
Right. But that...
So this is now...
Already authorizing a redevelopment agreement?
This is to fund, that there's a paper trail so that when the title company closes, they can see how funds, you know, on the HUD statement came into the city of Bayonne.
So we're going to take in X amount of funds and that number changed from X to X plus Y. And this allows for a funding agreement to be signed for one of a better term so that we're all in consonance about what the terms of the transaction are.
And all this, all this does is approve that financial agreement, nothing else?
The funding agreement, the funding source of two hundred...
Where the money's coming to clean up the soil.
Yes.
And nothing other?
Nothing other than that.
Would you like to move it?
So moved.
Second.
And on that one, Mr. Booker.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Mr. Perez.